Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily.
Welcome to the City of Madison Board of Education School Board meeting for June 6, 2023. If we'll rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. King, roll call, please.
Mr. Tim Holtman.
Here.
Mr. Travis Thomas. Mrs. Alex Lassner. Mr. Scott Newberry.
Here.
Overcash.
Here.
Board, if you'll take a moment and review the agenda, I need a motion and a second, please.
So moved?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Overcash and a second by Mr. Newberry. All those in favor of the agenda, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Agenda passes. That moves us into presentations. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'll ask Dr. Keri Donaldson to come forward at this time. We are going to recognize one of our students from James Clemmons. You gonna get everybody, Dr. Donaldson? I mean, there's a crowd. No, 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 no. We're good. We're good. We're good. Will you start that? We'll be here all night. Yeah, no, we're good.
All right. Oh, thank y'all for having me. So I was in the back talking to Mr. Mitchell. Said, hey, man, where's your mom? He said she's right there beside me. And I just got to talk to his mom. So I'm like, I meant to say, is your mom coming up here with you? So I apologize, okay? So Jack, come on down, buddy. Parents, I would love to see you too.
Brother?
Brother, come on, brother. Yes, yes. This is amazing, young man. Well, I'll wait till they come up. Then I, I promise I won't be long, okay?
Yes, sir.
How you doing, dad?
Good.
All right. A little bit embarrassing right now? Okay, good, good, good. All right, so this is a fine young man, fine young lady, fine family. I want to thank Bob's support that you give J.C. and Bob Jones. But I just want to say a few things about this young man and the accomplishments that he's had. So he played high school golf under Coach Matt Norwood as a junior. He was ranked as a number one junior in the state by Alabama Golf Association. He claimed the 2022 Boys 7A Individual Title, carding an eight under par, 136. Really don't know what that means, but it was great. He was named to the 2022 AHSAA Boys All-State Team, won the 2022 Alabama Boys State Junior Championship. His third-round score of 10-under was the lowest recorded tournament score of his career. Congratulations, man. I'm almost done, I promise. Claimed the 2021 Elite Invitational, which was played at Pinehurst Country Club. He recorded a third-place finish at the Lee Hodges Classic with a 36-hole score of 7-under. He qualified for the 2022 U.S. Boys Amateur Championship at Band and Dunes. And he also earned a spot on the 2022 U.S. Amateur Four-Ball Championship. And I believe this year, correct me if I'm wrong, you came in second place of the championship, correct? Sir, you were doing great things. And now he's going to continue his golf career at the University of Alabama. Can we please give him a round of applause? Take a picture after.
Come on, Bob. Jack, let me, let me just say how proud we are of you. And as some folks may know, Jack unfortunately had to miss his senior graduation ceremony at James Clemmons due to the fact that that's when they played the state golf tournament.
Hey, should we give our speeches again right now?
Sure, I'm all for it. And he, he, he won last year, was runner-up this year. We presented him his diploma at senior night, and we still have to get together in our caps and gowns and robes and go over to James Clemmons and get an official picture for your parents. But, and Jack and I, we went, last year when he won, I told him I'd never played with a state champion before. And so he let me take him out and play golf. And after I played with him, he didn't win this year. And so that's, it's, I feel very, I feel very bad that Jack saw my game and it probably cost him a stroke or two at least. But Jack, we're very proud of you for what you've done and, and representing the school district and James Clemmons. And we look forward to, to you moving forward to the university and having a great career there. Congratulations.
Mr. Peck is not here, so Lee is the official photographer.
Dr. Donaldson, you gonna get a picture?
I guess so, all right.
All right.
Hey, parents, y'all come? Some of you come?
All right.
Thank you. Dr. Nichols, we'll stay with presentations.
Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Heather Donaldson couldn't be with us tonight. But we'd like to recognize our TSA state competition. Part of our Career Tech program is both the state and the national level, the Career Tech Association. And TSA is part of our middle school career tech organization. Ms. Harrington and Ms. Haynes help coordinate that. They're the sponsors for TSA. Students perform and compete at the state level. And we've had several, several winners this year. And so I'm going to ask Ms. Harrington and Ms. Haynes to come forward. I think they're going to introduce the folks that are here tonight and their placement at the state level. So come right on.
Thank you so much for recognizing our kids' hard work this year. I'm Amanda Haynes from Discovery.
I'm Mrs. Harrington from Liberty Middle School.
And we both worked together to coordinate the first TSA challenge that we had at Liberty this year, where we kind of scrimmaged each other. And I think that really contributed to our performance at the state level. And we just wanted to recognize some of our kids. We had an outstanding performance, especially given the fact that, you know, at Discovery, this is the first year that we had gone to the state tournament for this. And so we had several, several winners. You get a medal for winning first through third place in any of the events. How do you want us to?
You just call them their names and they come up here.
Call them up and they'll come up here. Okay, that's fine. So we had Gaida Abdalawi. I don't think she's here. We had Zachary Duklos, Lyra Wilson, and Jake and Long. Y'all come on up. Oh, there's Gaida. Okay, y'all come on up. Zachary couldn't be here. Would it be in summer? You know, we have kids out of town. But these three individuals got first place in the event called Catapult. So they had to make a catapult and test it, and it had to be really accurate. And they worked on that constantly at practices and stuff. And then it's just a state event. They don't offer it at the national level. But they came out first, so they did the best. So we were proud of that.
Yeah, let's keep them right there. Y'all scoot right over here. We're gonna get the whole group up here.
Okay. And then we also had Clayton Bruins and Cindy Chin and Logan Ridbaum. But Cindy's not here today, but the boys are here. They actually placed second for coding. And so they did really good at their coding event. They got the second in the state. And then we had, y'all can step aside. And then we had Vedant, Gopinathan, and Neil Gouda that got third place for children's stories. And I don't think Vedant is here, but Neil is here. So that was third place for writing a children's book that was on Leadership and Perseverance, I believe. And then Emily Crum and Cindy Chin. I don't think either of them are here, but they actually got first place for children's stories. And Emily Crum is actually going to go to the national TSA competition with her storybook that she wrote that's called The Determined Seed. It was really phenomenal. The judges loved that book. And so I'm looking forward to seeing how she places for that in July in Kentucky. And then John Gabriel Wheelock and Trenton Holcomb are not here, but they placed first for structural engineering. And that was just creating like a balsa wood bridge. So we're happy for them. They're not here. We'll congratulate them as well. And then our other two people over here have like medals out like crazy. Jake and Long got first for flight and Lyra Wilson got third for flight. And so they did really well on their glider that they made. And actually, Jake and is going to go to the national competition as well. So this, not only the first time that Discovery's been to state, but we have two kids that are going to national. So we're pretty proud of that.
You come up here with them and let Lee get your picture.
Okay.
Y'all kind of come together right over there. Let Lee get your picture. Yes, and I have to hear, give this to you for each of them?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And for Liberty Middle School, we had 13 competitors. And unfortunately, because it's summer, we only had three students able to come tonight. But CAD Foundations, Career Prep, which is a resume interview, where they do a mock interview, Challenging Technology Issues, Cybersecurity, Digital Photography, Essays and Technology, Forensic Technology, and Off the Grid were all of the placements. And we had nine winners out of the team going. So I would like Joel to come up. Joel was stellar. He did three events and placed in all three. Off the Grid, which is Sustainable Architecture, he came in third place. Challenging Technology Issues, he came in second place against the Liberty team, which came in first place. And your third event was CAD Foundations. He came in second place, which is extremely good for a seventh grader. And then we have Jonah Yang, who also competed. This was his first time being in sixth grade. And Jonah, remind me which one you placed in, buddy? Which one was Jonah? Which one did Jonah place in? You don't remember? Jonah, are you gonna come up, buddy? CAD Foundations, that's it. Good job. Okay, and then we have Joseph Lee, who Challenging Tech Issues is a debate competition. And he worked with Joel on that event. They competed extremely well. This is a competition where you don't know what your topic is going to be. And it could be robotics, engineering. I mean, it could be all sorts of technical topics. And there are six topics, and they don't know until they get there. And they have 15 minutes to prepare. So they did really well in that. So we had first place, the Career Prep, and third place were Liberty students. That was Harsha Chander and Jake Coligan. Challenging Tech Issues, first place was Epiphany Kendrick and Harsha Chander. Cybersecurity was first place, Liam Shelley, and second place, Caden Swinford. Both of them are going up to J.C. this coming year. So we look forward to them at the TSA competition with the high school. Digital Photography was third place, Laya Gouda. Epiphany Kendrick, second place. Essays and Technology. Forensic Technology with the help of Dr. Schrod with our Science Department. It was a group effort. And first place for state went to Laya Gouda and Harsha Chander. And so anyway, we're very proud of these guys, so.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you to all these students. I hate that we're in summertime and many of them couldn't be here. We love bringing our students in and recognizing them. And at this time, Ms. Lambert's going to come forward, and she's going to recognize another group of our outstanding students. Ms. Lambert?
Good evening, board. How are y'all?
Good.
Good. There's a few missing here. So I did want to take this opportunity to introduce our Green Power Patriot Racing. They are an amazing group of young people. Several years ago, I was honored to be able to go to Indy with, with our Patriot Racing team, which was just a fabulous experience. And so, so interesting to see our students partner with Indy drivers. That was just such an experience. So from local races to, to Talladega this year, to even, to national events, this has really been an amazing journey for them so far. They started out years ago with one car. Now we're up to three.
Wow.
So it, it's just, it's also amazing because we're also into custom cars now, which is just absolutely fascinating. This year, they overcame a couple of obstacles when cars actually broke down, actually crashed and broke. They had built cars, they have rebuilt cars, they have tweaked, they have adjusted. It's everything in engineering from, from planning to building to analytics to monitoring. They are an amazing and impressive crew. Coach Jesse Gaines, if you will come on up and please bring your team.
All right. Thank you all so much for letting us come tonight. I got so excited when we got home from the national championship competition this year that I sent all of you an email with some of those pictures that we took and some of our really exciting results. But May 5th and 6th, we qualified along with about 20 other high school teams to come race. We were invited to come race at the national championship for Green Power USA at Talladega Superspeedway. We walked away with a sweep, which should not have happened. There was so much working against us. And the students from August had to really persevere through some really tough, tough days, tough weeks, tough races. They built a custom car, which we did not think would last a single race. And it did. It lasted a whole season, and it, it won its entire division. So we're incredibly proud. So this is Green Power USA National Championship race. In the F-24 Advanced Modified Division, Bob Jones High School took first and second place in the country. And in the F-24 Advanced Custom Division, Bob Jones took first place. That not only was how many laps they could make with student drivers and their electric cars in 90 minutes, but it also was a really complicated and impressive video presentation that they had to direct, film, edit, all of that. So super, super proud of these students. We will miss our seniors terribly. But we've already established our new teams for next year. We're already rebuilding, and we have very, very high expectations for our new teams. Looking forward to another good year.
Thanks.
Yeah. So thank you so much.
Thank you. You get right in there with it. We're gonna get your all's picture. Well, thank all of you. We certainly are proud of the work you've done. And I think I actually, yep, that is you. I was afraid that I had actually handed yours off to somebody else. The Green Power Race is so much fun to watch. And what's really exciting is not just the car, but behind the scenes and what's happening, the analytics side of it. And if you, if you haven't been around, they have this tremendous facility to build their car in at Bob Jones. It's on the backside of the school. And it's not a tremendous facility. One of these days, we're going to add on in the near future, and we're going to have a Green Power Room to, to equal their success. But if you go by there any night, they are out there working on that car. And it is really exciting to watch them. So thank you to them and your team for the work that they've done. Thank you so much.
All right. Dr. Nichols, does that close out presentations this evening?
Yes, sir.
All right. Now is the time of the evening for public comments. If, if you have registered with Ms. King, then you can come forward and address the board and address the public. Just please remember that there may be differing opinions and just be respectful of all. Ms. King?
Thank you very much. I wanted to come here. I was encouraged to come for, share this perspective on the truancy policy with the board. And it's a negative. I don't want it to be negative, but I prepared a statement here. A little bit of background, I have five kids in the school district. They're all good kids. Four out of the five of them finished with all As. And I think that's because of my interest in their education, not to do the truancy policy. But I have had issues with how the truancy policy is being enforced in the schools. It places an undue burden on, on me as a parent to be able to decide how to send, when and how to send my kids into school. I routinely send my kids into school sick, and I find that amongst other parents, that they are also in that same category. And I could tell you a lot of stories there that I'm not going to get into here. I've spoken to school nurses, administrators, other parents, other students that have graduated. And it seems that there is a, a policy that encourages parents to send their schools, their kids to school sick. And after doing some digging, I've come to the conclusion that it is a truancy policy that's, that's of issue. And I was encouraged to come share this perspective today. I read the attendance manual written by the Alabama Department of Education. I read the administrative code, the legislative code, the Alabama Constitution, the relevant sections. And nowhere can I find an answer to what I think is the crux to the problem. Now, when a public official or government agency requires a citizen to buy a product or a service, that's called a tax or a fee, right? And in my view, your administrative staff, by enforcing the, the attendance manual or with legally dubious authority requiring a doctor's note. Now, nowhere can I find legislative intent giving legal authority for the district administrative officials to demand proof of this tax payment to a third-party beneficiary, right? So the doctor's office benefits from this doctor's note, right? Not the school districts or anybody else like the fees and the taxes do. The State Department of Education draws their authority from the legislative code to execute the policies and procedures, right, authorized by law. Administrative code that they write encourages school districts to follow the handbook guidance, right? But nowhere in the legislative intent can I find any legal authority for this undue tax. I did talk to a couple of education attorneys, and they kind of agree that this does require further review. And so what I'm asking today is that you talk to legal district counsel and report back into the public forum on what the legal authority is to require a doctor's note in this context. And also, you guys have the legal authority to request a, from the district attorney or the Attorney General's Office, a legal opinion on this matter. So I would encourage you to do that if you find that necessary. And in the meantime, I did come here in the summertime with this issue. As not to cause any issue during the school year. And so I hope that you guys address this issue, and I look forward to your feedback.
Thank you, sir. Ms. King? No one else has signed up tonight? All right. I will close public comments tonight, and we will move to business action items.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the consent agenda contains the following items: A, Minutes 23-10 of May 18, 2023; B, Minutes 23-11 of May 24, 2023; several field trip requests; C, a field trip request for James Clemmons cross-country to go to camp at Brevard College in North Carolina; D, a field trip request for James Clemmons Band to participate in the competition in the fall in Rome, Georgia; and a field trip request for the James Clemmons Yearbook students to participate in training in Dallas this summer; F, a service agreement by and between the City Board of Madison and Southern Jam Security to provide security at various schools across the district, $24 an hour; G, a counseling service agreement by and between the City Board of Education and the Enrichment Center; and H, an extension of the agreement by and between the City Board of Education and NEACH.com for profiling analytics for the school district for 12 months.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the consent agenda items listed for you, A through H. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Newberry and a second by Mr. Overcash. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Consent agenda passes. Dr. Nichols?
At this time, I'll ask Ms. Williams to come forward and present the April 2023 Financial and Bank Reconciliation Statement.
Good evening, board and Dr. Nichols.
Good evening.
I'm going to present the April financial statements, excuse me. We should be at 58%. Our current revenues are at 66%, and our expenditures are at 50%.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the April 2023 Financial and Bank Reconciliation Statements from Madison City School.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the April 2023 Financial and Bank Reconciliation Statements. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Overcash and a second by Mr. Newberry. Any discussion, board? Before the board meeting this evening, we had a finance meeting where Ms. Williams went through the, the April financials with us. And we appreciate that. And we were able to have a give and take and get any questions that we had answered there. With no further discussion, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols?
I'll ask Ms. Williams now to present to, to the board the April 2023 Budget Amendment for Madison City School.
The April Budget Amendment, we had just one change to our capital projects in the amount of $1.4 million. And that pretty much was due to various items that were discussed in the finance.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the 2023 Budget Amendment, April 2023 Budget Amendment, Madison City School.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the April 2023 Budget Amendment. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
A motion by Mr. Newberry and a second by Mr. Overcash. Any discussion? No discussion. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols? Thank you, Ms. Williams. Moving to personnel actions.
Mr. President, members of the board, under Personnel Actions, I present several principal contracts. As the board is aware, principals after a probationary period of one or two years, according to whether they're a first-time principal or not, roll into a three-year contract under the Teach Accountability Act of Alabama. We have several here before you that are moving out of the probationary into a three-year contract, and some that are actually renewing a three-year contract, and one probationary contract for one year since that person has already been a principal prior to this appointment. I recommend for approval the principal contracts that are presented to you.
Mr. Sanderson, we can take these as a group. Is that correct?
Yes.
Excellent. Board, is that fine with you? Take these as a group? Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the principal contracts that you have before you. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Overcash and a second by Mr. Newberry. Any discussion? With no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? The principal contracts pass. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval of supplemental contracts for work performed for Madison City Schools presented to you.
Board, the superintendent recommends... Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the list of supplemental contracts that you have before you. Can these be taken as a group? With a group fine, can I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
A motion by Mr. Newberry and a second by Mr. Overcash. Discussion?
Mr. President, members of the board, pretty standard for this time of the year. You have camps, E S Y E L, summer learning camps, as well as sports camps. And many of these are contracts to serve out those during the summer.
Any additional comments, Board? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Supplemental contracts pass. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the remainder of the personnel agenda with extended leaves, transfers, also employments, resignations, retirements, and job discretions.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the remaining personnel actions that you have before you. Can these be taken as a group? The group fine, can I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
A motion by Mr. Overcash and a second by Mr. Newberry. Any discussion? With no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? The personnel actions pass. Dr. Nichols, are there any you'd like to call special attention to tonight?
Well, we do have a retirement on there, but it's not going to be effective until July 1 of 2024. Mr. Lipinski has let us know that he plans to retire. We're going to celebrate him. It could be like a birthday. We just celebrate him the whole year. I don't know. But Mr. Lipinski, for about 18 years, has, has been juggling several major areas for the district. 504, textbooks, testing, just so many things. And so in an effort to make sure we transition through those, we want to go ahead and, and create some jobs that will do that. And you've done that in the action as well. We have a testing and accountability coordinator. That person will take care of all of the testing and data. We will be moving some of the textbooks into the curriculum area. And then of course, 504 with the creation of our coordinator of special ed will go into that. So it'll be a year that we transition all of these into new people's role and, and Mr. Lipinski will help us do that. So I'm glad that we can get that transition going this year. With your actions, Mr. President, members of the board, you also named a new system supervising nurse. And so it's my pleasure to introduce Becky Tucker to you tonight. Becky's been at Madison Elementary School. She's been with us since 216. And, but prior to that in Limestone County. She has been an absolute wonderful person to work with there. She was unanimous choice of the committee that interviewed all of the candidates. And she got the seal of approval from, from Ms. Bonnie. When I, when I told her, you know, Bonnie back there, that's like handing over your child. She's the only person that's ever birthed that child and, and delivered it for 24 and a half years into the school district. And, and so she was so excited. And Becky, you've got folks with you here tonight. If you'd like to come forward and introduce your family that's here with you, we would love for that. And we look forward to working with you in the future.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm humbled by this opportunity to serve our system. It's been my pleasure to be at Madison Elementary. We always say that we're the original and we're the best and I'm going to stand by that. But the goal is just to, you know, follow in Nurse Bonnie's footsteps. Dr. Nichols told me I did not have to fill her shoes and I know that that would be an impossible job to do. So we're going to do that as we move forward and get ready for this next school year. So this is my husband, Micah Tucker, and these are my children. This is Luke. He is our oldest. He is going to be a sophomore at U N A. And this is Seth. He's our middle guy. And he is going to be a senior at East Limestone. And this is Ally Claire. She's our, our baby girl and she's going to be a sophomore at East Limestone, too. Big band kids here, so if you want to check with them after that, you know, I'd love for you to give them a holler. But they've been a huge support to me. And, you know, I just, I could not do what I do without them, you know, letting me have extra time, especially when we needed it during the pandemic. So I'm just, I'm real proud of them and I'm real excited about the opportunity.
Well, thank you. We're excited for you and look forward to serving with you. Thank you so much.
Dr. Nichols, any further personnel actions?
No, sir.
All right. That moves us to superintendent comments.
Just a few things. First of all, with your action earlier this evening, we did expand our partnership with Southern Jam Security. It's not a sound system company. It is a company that provides us security personnel. This past year, they've provided us a security person at both high schools because we have the entrance places there where our security can be and also one at Midtown. And we just felt like as, as we, as the board has approved in the last several months, we have upgraded security issues and programs around the district. As the board remembers, we will have an alert system next year from Syntegix that every employee will have a badge that they can signal through that badge to get assistance from the SRO or the Administration for Health Issues or Discipline Issues. They also will have a lockdown code that they can hit that would secure the building and lock down the school. And we just felt like it was time to also expand the presence. We're still working with our city and I can't say enough for Chief Gandy and, and our Madison Police Department. As we expand our SROs, we're going to get there in the next few years and have one in every elementary school. We have them at the middle and high schools. But until that time, this agreement will give a security person unarmed, but a security person at every elementary school on top of what we already had. And so that we're very glad to have that. They can check doors. They can, they can help in the office if they're needed. They can check outside while students are outside. They will be able to communicate with our SROs. And so we just feel like that with the alert system that we've got, also the board you approved and remember that we're going to have a buzz-in system on our front doors with cameras and that to get into our buildings and secure those a little tighter, that this is just beneficial to help us as well. So I appreciate Dr. West and our team working on that. You also approved the enrichment center agreement. Allison is, is here and we've been in partnership with the enrichment center for several years and they have supplied our tier-three mental health workers. We're, it's a great partnership that we have with them. We will be expanding that to seven full-time mental health specialists on top of our counselors that we have. And so they really help us to, to interact in those cases where parents and students need that assistance. And so we're looking forward to continuing that and working with the enrichment center. Allison, we appreciate that partnership. We also will be expanding some of our counseling services in the school. We, we've been sharing a counselor at Bob Jones and James Clemens. We'll, we're going to make that half unit full-time. So they'll each have five counselors along with the enrichment counselor. And then we also will add a half unit to share between Discovery and Liberty. As Journey grows, we'll have to look at how we expand that. So we're, we're looking at also, as we've expanded at the high schools and separated the job duties between our athletic director and our assistant principal, that we now feel like that we have a team in place that can help us to really focus on intervention, on RTI, on absenteeism, on disciplinary issues, and help provide the support needed and, and actually catching those students before they fall through. And so I'm real excited about starting the school year with this, this team, this structure in place so that we can do that. All of our SROs, and it seems like a good portion of the district staff are at the Taz Row Conference. And we're glad about that. We do have some Madison police that are covering our meeting tonight that are on duty and they, they're checking in. But our Taz Row officers, Dr. West, Mr. Terrell, Mr. Jones, and our, our SROs are at that conference and look forward to what they will bring back with us as they update us on that. And we also have some professional learning, community groups, principals that are traveling for professional development and working on that as well. So it's a busy time. Lots of folks, a lot of moving parts going on. Dr. Ja probably has the most moving parts of anybody over there because there's always people in the loop to get hired. And then that means on board day that that just, it's like, it's like a ticker. It just keeps going and finally Ms. King has to, we just have to shut it off. But I can't say that we probably won't ask the board to come back for a quick meeting a couple of times this summer, just because it really helps Dr. Ja to get those in and her staff and, and get all that paperwork. And while we don't have a tremendous amount of openings like maybe we've had in, in years past, the ones we have, we have some assistant principal openings and, and the AD jobs, they could create dominoes. And so Dr. Ja and her team have been very proactive in posting jobs in preparation in case we have those, those dominoes that happen. And I certainly appreciate them for that work. I think that's all we have at this time. It's a busy summer already and, and it doesn't slow down a lot. But that, now's when we get all those things done that'll help us have a smooth start to school in, in about six weeks. So.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols. We'll move into board comments. Mr. Overcash?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Newberry?
I just want to thank the finance team for the finance meeting earlier. Tell everybody happy summer. And Dr. Nichols is right. This is a very thick packet for the first, first meeting of summer. School district does not slow down. So we appreciate all the work that everybody does. That's all I've got for today.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Yes, congratulations to all the, all the principals that we processed tonight on the, on their updated contracts. Very well deserved. We have a, a great district and it's, it's great from the, from, from every position that we have. And it's, it's certainly, the bar is set by those, those principals that lead each of your schools and we're so thankful for them. It is, June really is almost Professional Development Month. We have a lot of people at the Taz Row Conference and, and your different administrators and your different groups will have their, their own conferences through the month, including this board. We will, we will have ASB training. Our summer training will take place. And, and so we will, we will get up to date on, on the end of the legislative cycle in the state and, and lots of other changes that will have, will have occurred. And, and as Dr. Nichols indicated, we look forward to other very timely and very important information that, that will come out of the SRO Conference or otherwise known as the Taz Row Conference. So, so we're excited about that. Very important training that goes on at this time of year. I don't have anything further. Mr. Sanderson?
You mentioned the legislative session. You'll probably hear a lot more about this, but just give you a quick update of a couple of things that, that's come to our attention and looked at in the last few days and the significance in your purchasing. The bid law has been amended by the legislature to increase the threshold for bidding for purchases from 15,000 to 40,000. So anything under $40,000 now can be purchased through internal purchasing procedures without bidding. You probably need to revise your financial procedures on that. But, and then on public works, projects that you bid for capital projects, that threshold is increased from 50,000 to 100,000. So again, you wouldn't have to bid anything that's under $100,000 for any capital improvements to schools or facilities. So that will make things a little easier to process. There are some other changes of some significance that not, won't come up that often, but others, some changes passed with respect to publishing, advertising, and emergencies. But we'll, we've, I've outlined some of that to Dr. Nichols and the financial staff. And so we'll try to stay on top of that. But you'll, you'll hear probably at your conferences about a lot of other changes gone on the legislature. But that one, we've been looking at for some time and expecting it to come about. Glad it did. And future increases on the bid law, there will be a CPI adjustment after 2027 every three years. So that, that'll let that creep up. I was having to confess to Jan a while ago. I remember when it was 3,000. So, and, and it's just been, it, it would only change like every 10 or 15 years. And it's been probably 15 or more since it moved up to 15,000. So it's probably time for them to make an adjustment. But wanted to give you all a heads up about that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Sanderson, for the update. If there's nothing further, I'll announce that our next school, regularly scheduled school board meeting is June 27, 2023 at 5:00 PM here in the boardroom. If there's nothing further, I'll take a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Overcash, second by Mr. Newberry. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? We're adjourned.